All right, we will call this regular city council meeting on Monday, March the 7th, 2022 at 6:30 PM to order. If you would, all please rise and we're going to have an invocation led by our city attorney, Darren Coker, and our pledges to both the United States and the Texas flag by council member Little.
Thank you. Please join me in prayer. Darren, only father, just want to thank you, come to you with thankful hearts this evening and the ability that we get to come together in a public setting and a public meeting and have participation in local government. And we just thank you for the rights that we have here in this community to be able to do that. And we thank you for our leaders that are here this evening. We just pray that the council members as they deliberate your business tonight and for this community that you would give them wisdom and discernment as they deliberate and make decisions that are ultimately in the best interest of the city. Finally, just want to lift up the people in Eastern Europe, specifically Ukraine. Father, we just pray for peace in that region and that you have your hand on them. And again, we just thank you for this ability to have this meeting tonight and be safe, be with everyone as they head home this evening and provide them safe travels. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
And moving forward in our agenda, roll call and certification of a quorum. We'll certify that we do have a quorum present as all members are present in the chambers. So with that, citizens comments, we do have a couple of citizens comments that signed up, but they signed up specifically for an agenda item. As we get to it, we will call on those at that appropriate time. Moving forward, public hearing, public hearing number one, I'll ask Martin or staff to read the reason for the public hearing and then go straight into your staff report.
The first item, first public hearing that we have tonight is a request by Caroline O'Brien from Bajeko Coke applicant on behalf of Kwakjunkhuan owner for approval of a conditional use permit, CUP, mini warehouse self-storage use within the general commercial zoning district, accommodate a proposed self-storage facility on a 10-acre track of land. The general location of the property is on the north side of 1323 North Main Street, Belen, Texas. Again, this request is for, as I mentioned, for approval of a conditional use permit for mini warehouse self-storage use within the GC district, accommodate a proposed self-storage facility on a 10-acre track of land located on the east side of Main Street, south of Nap Road. The next slide is the zoning map and it reflects that the property is zoned GC, general commercial. There's some industrial uses on the south side and the north side of the property. This track of land has never developed and Main Street, it will be fronting on Main Street. Main Street is the only major roadway that has a corridor designation that allows self-storage to have frontage on it per the new rules that were adopted by city council last month. The future land use plan has this property designated for industrial use. The next slide is the proposed site plan by the applicant and it reflects the development of self-storage facility consisting of office and business incubator spaces within the front and approximately 41 square foot climate-controlled building in the back and 12 storage buildings totaling approximately 62,000 square feet. These are not climate-controlled buildings. There are a few renderings by the applicant for this proposal and you can see them on the screen. Some of them reflecting the front facade of the building. The top left corner is the front facade and then the other ones are focusing on the building's interior to the side. This is an overall rendering showing the entire development. As you can see, the big climate-controlled building in the back, there's some rental office in the front, as I mentioned, and some other 12 buildings, these are not climate-controlled. I just want to mention that based on the specific use regulations that were adopted by city council last month include that these type of facilities has to be completely climate-controlled. And this application made it actually before these rules were adopted. Moving on, I've got some slides showing the property. This is looking from Main Street towards the property. The second two slides showing adjacent properties to the south and to the north of this vacant and developed property. And last but not least, these are staff recommended conditions that were bought by staff to mitigate some of the things that with this proposal, one of them would be to locate the office and incubator spaces within the front facing Main Street to avoid having this self-storage units being placed in the front. And the second one would be for additional landscaping to screen the view of the self-storage units from the north and south. Planning Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on the CUP on the February 21st regular meeting, and there was some discussion about the new adopted rules for mini warehouse self-storage. There was some discussion also about the design of buildings and the need for maybe some facade enhancements to the design and also change for the non-climate control portions proposal and removing of the drive-up doors from being also located in the front. However, there was no any concern about the use. All four members present at the meeting stated they would approve this request. And that completes the staff report.
All right, thank you for that. Is the applicant present? Okay, we do have opportunity for an applicant presentation. So if you'll give your name and address for the record and please tell us about the project.
Hello, Lynn O'Brien. I'm with Bajeko Coke. My address is 20329 State Highway 249, Suite 350, Houston, Texas, 77070. We don't have a big presentation for you guys tonight. Just wanted to say a couple of things. The developer for this project is Legacy. This isn't their first self-storage, so they have experience doing it. We understand that the site plan that we have shown for you today will need to be updated for the climate control rules that just came in. And we also understand the additional landscaping that staff has recommended. The client just opted not to update the renderings, but they know that it's important that it looks nice and that we have the incubator space out front and all that. So other than that, I don't really have anything additional unless you have questions for me.
And that's fine. When we get to question and answers, we may have a few questions for you. So when we get there, we'll let you know. Thank you for being here tonight. Moving forward in our public hearing, we have those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request and can go to the podium and you've got three minutes, give your name and address for the record. Second request for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Well, we can also call on them. We have two people, Ms. Letitia Cantu and Mickey Frazier. Got it, okay. We'll make that change. Thank you for that. Didn't see anybody moving. We thought, oh, maybe they stepped out. Anyway, third and final time, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. All right, moving forward in our public hearing, turn it over to city council for any questions, comments, concerns.
Yeah, I have, well, I have, I do have a concern really on the number that we have here. I'm just looking up and just on 518, we've got six storage places on 518 from here over to 288 and the last two over there is probably about 50 yards apart. I just think there's a better use for the land than that. And I know some of them are storage and incubator type things, but you know, we're getting pretty heavily populated of that here. And like I say, there's six, I guess, in between here and 518 on 518 and over to 288 from this location to 288. And I just think there's better use for the land, you know, and some other capacity on there. And you know, I just think we've got really a lot of storage places in here and that's this one I'm talking about just on 518 and that's it. And that's how many we got just on 518 and that doesn't count hard in the other places. So I'll be voting for this one.
Any other questions, comments?
Sure, Mayor. I'll just, I'll say, certainly you could always make the argument for there's something better that could be there, but it's been undeveloped for quite a while. It's across the street from cemetery. There's some industrial uses on the other end. I don't know that we're going to get a significantly better use here. I appreciate member Owens's comments. I just don't know that when we create relatively arbitrary conditions on what we could approve, such as a number within the vicinity, though I value your opinion, my friend, I just don't think that that's something that we really should take into consideration. We just don't have any criteria that states how far some of these should be from each other or any other business. So I think, I mean, look, I'd love to have an office building there. I'd love to have an industrial space. I'd love to have something, but it's not my land. It gives us the owners of this land an opportunity to get some value out of it. And it's a necessary component to our society to have, to have, have these storage facilities. So that's why I'll be a yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Mohammed, just for the recommendations that you had, was there a staff idea on the placement regards to those recommendations, just to get a flavor for what you guys were thinking of?
Yes, the recommendation for the shade trees are each, for each, every 10, for one tree every 10 feet of light depth and for metal trees for one tree every 15 feet of light depth.
And was there a general, can we go back to the diagram, sorry? Was there, do you want to stage those all in the front right of way or more towards the side? Because you have a lot, you have a lot of viewpoint driving north, south on the sides.
These recommendations is for the north and south side. The front side will be covered by the regulations for the corridor overlay district. So we do have three requirements that's coming from the code for the front side.
Is the applicant open to those? I'm not crazy about the recommendation for the storage, but I think with a certain amount of screening, I could probably get there.
I think the applicant stated that they will be okay with that, but I'll give them the opportunity.
Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing and we'll turn to new business item number one. Councilmember Orlando, would you present that, please?
Sure, Mayor. Consideration Impossible Action Resolution Number R 2022-CUP 22-2. So moved.
We have a motion in a second. We've had staff report and council comments on it. So Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
No.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
No.
Okay.
We helped out.
Madam Secretary, did you get all that?
Yes, I did. Motion carried four to three.
We're breaking you in.
Thank you.
Some of us have a very early flight in the morning, so we're trying to get through.
All right, moving to public hearing number two, but before we do, Member Perez, did you, Member Perez, before we put number two on the table?
Thank you, Mayor, for the benefit of the citizenry. I was approached by the applicant as a consultant prior to him knowing I was on council. So for that reason, it's not appropriate for me to attend this meeting or have an opportunity to vote. So I will be recusing myself.
All right, thank you for that. Turn to staff if you'll read the reason for the public hearing and move forward in your staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This public hearing number two is for a request by Navam Siva Rubin from the One PE Group LLC applicant on behalf of Mamun Hussain of Amara Group owner for approval of a zone change from the suburban residential 15 or SR 15 district to the light industrial M1 district, approximately two acres of land. And the general location is at the southwest quadrant of McLean Road and Bailey Road. Again, I will state that request is for approval of a zone change from the suburban residential 15 to light industrial M1 district to accommodate on approximately two acres of land located the southwest quadrant of Bailey and McLean Road. The applicant intent is to rezone this property to develop it for self-storage, not a coincidence. The requested zone change for light industrial was sought by the applicant in anticipation that this, the new rules the city council adopted would restrict this self-storage to industrial zone land only. So that was really the intent. It was to anticipate that this would only be allowed in either light industrial or heavy industrial. They were open to the idea of the GB. Now we know self-storage is allowed in GB as well. Staff has received some written comments from the public in opposition to this request. The zoning map that you see on the, on the, on the screen is, shows the property is zoned, again, residential 15. It is designated on the future land use plan as low-density residential by the future land use plan. Moving to some street views, this was taken from McLean looking directly towards the subject property. And these few views are for adjacent properties. The one on the left corner is looking at the house that's the northwest corner of the subject property. To the right corner is the house that's located on the south side of the property. And the bottom view is for the RV dealer that across the street as well as one home that's also located on the east side of this property. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted two public hearings for the proposed zone change at their February 7 and 21 regular meetings. During these hearings, two people spoke in opposition to this request. After that discussion, the commission made a motion to recommend approval and that motion failed to pass by a vote of zero to four. That was, that constitutes a negative recommendation and the city council will have to vote by super majority to overturn that, to approve the zone change. The city council can make action to approve the request as presented, but that requires super majority or approve it with a lesser intensity zoning, zoning district designation. That also requires super majority vote or deny the request. Again, the applicant stated that again, the applicant made the light industrial because he was anticipating that would, self-storage would be restricted to only industrial zone land. However, the property can be, can be used for other uses as well. So that concludes the staff report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mohammed. Is the applicant present? Oh, you have a presentation? Okay, you, so you have comments? Please go to the podium, name and address for the record and welcome.
My name is Mohammed Hussain with Roughneck Mini Storage. Thank you for your time. Currently reside at 36174 Hollow Way here in Pearland. We did make an application for our current property there on McLean Road and I just wanted to bring up a couple of things or a couple of points to the committee's attention. One, the current property, the way it sits and the zoning that it's currently in right now cannot be developed as a residential property, although it's zoned as residential or was put in a residential zoning and until I guess future developments where to see what was to play around it. The property that we're currently zoned as residential, once again, I reiterate, cannot be used as residential. Cost impact of that property to make it a residential property is beyond substantial. Secondly, I come here alone, but I come here with people from our community. If you're taking a look at the map there, the property that's exactly adjacent to my left is owned by a gentleman by the name of Ali, Ali Sharif. Ali Sharif tried to be here tonight. His intentions are as minds are to convert his property from residential to commercial. He just hasn't got to the process of doing that yet. He was coming in from Dallas and wanted to join us here this evening to kind of stand us, stand with us here in solidarity as far as a zone change. Behind Mr. Sharif is Mr. Wong. Mr. Wong sent you a letter that we sent over to the city council with the understanding that his intention is to change it from residential to zoning. So I want you to take into consideration that all of our neighboring partners in that particular area are with the intention of changing their zoning from residential to commercial. So unfortunately, this isn't going to be the first time you guys are going to have to go through this with that particular location. The reason we're all here developing that area is because of the development of Pearland. Pearland spent a tremendous amount of resources and time in developing Bailey Road. Bailey Road was built and developed with the intention of bringing in commercial invested venture capitalists such as myself to bring in commercial properties to Bailey Road. You guys rang the bell and we showed up. We're asking for your support in that. We're asking for your support in that. I understand we had a lot of objections to our existing future plans. Luckily, we had a chance to meet our neighbors, the ones that were objecting to the existing development of a mini-storage there on McLean Road. Based on our conversation, and some of the things that conspired during that conversation, I come to find out that their biggest objection to our particular development out there is not because it's a commercial property, although that's what they stated, it's because the property that's adjacent to theirs is currently owned by them is a mini-storage. It's a direct reflection of competition to their particular property. What I'm saying is, the people that are objecting to our current situation, or the people that live exactly next door to us, have the mini-storage next door to them. We were also approached after the last planning and zoning committee by the gentleman that owns the property across the street from us, who currently has a storage facility. Now luckily, we were offered pennies on the dollar to buy us out and have us go away and turn us down for our request, in hopes of him purchasing the property to do the exact same thing we're here asking you to do today. Now, I bring all this with you, I've sent you the information up there, I believe all of you guys have a copy of all the records. The only objections we have in the city of Pearland to our mini-storages is the people that actually own the mini-storages in front and next to us. To address the councilman's concerns as far as the amount of mini-storages that are coming into Pearland, this councilman, I can assure you that everyone's done their due diligence, and the only reason we're coming is because of the demand that's required right now currently in Pearland. Right now, based on our studies and our last two years of studies in this area, we are running at about a 97% occupancy rate. So the reason we're all here to try to build mini-storages is only because of the demand of that particular property. I reiterate, the property that we're currently sitting on now is residential. In order to build a residential property or make that property deemable, we would have to literally put an $8 million home on that property to offset the cost of building that property up to make it feasible for residential.
Does that conclude your applicant's presentation?
It does, yes, sir.
All right, thank you for that. We'll move forward in our public hearing agenda. Those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request can go to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and you've got three minutes to speak, and I think there'll be a three-minute countdown clock up on the screens. There we go. And again, just please give me your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Letitia Cantu. I live at 1150 Chelsea Lane, and I'm here to represent the robbers. I appreciate his words, but he lied. We did not speak to him that way. We are opposing it. For one, he threatened me, and he said if I didn't like the mini-storages, then he would put public housing there. He also said, and if I didn't like that, how would we like to have rental property next to us? And I have witnesses. This has gotten totally out of hand. I didn't think that after Grandma and Grandpa have lived there 40 years, that we would have to go through this. They have rebuilt their home seven times in 12 years because it has flooded, which that is a floodway, a flood zone. Our concern is the noise, the security, a 24-hour unmanned secure, mini-storages, totally unsafe. He wants to build it 20 feet from Grandma's house. That's our property. That's our reunions, that's our Christmases, our Thanksgiving, our birthday parties. He said he would build a wall. Well, how would y'all like to stare at a wall every time we're having a get-together and a party? How would you like to have all the lights on when we're trying to watch the fireworks that the city puts on? No, he lied. He absolutely lied. We're not opposed because there's storages there? That has nothing to do with it. We have flooded. We had to tear down our garages. We are now on blocks, because every time it rains, it floods. We have to put them on higher ground and then bring back our cars when and if the flooding goes down. And y'all, the city knows about it. It's in a floodway. I'm sorry that he made a bad deal by buying this. Don't come to our neighborhood and want to rezone it. And I don't know about those other people that he is speaking about, because this is the first that we, as residents, hear about it. So I'm asking y'all to please disapprove this and to leave our livelihoods alone. We want to live in peace. It's, I mean, I appreciate the city wanting to build Bailey for a thoroughfare for the residents, but it's Indianapolis 500, and you can hear all that noise at Grandma's house. Let them be at peace, and please do not vote for the, whatever we're voting. I can't even think, I'm so upset. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We'll move on. Those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request, go to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Thank you, sir.
My name is Mickey Frazier. I own the eight acres that backs up to the east side of this property, and my concern is, what's he gonna do with the water? I don't see where there's room for a retention pond. Basically, it's water for me.
Good question. Question we can ask under questions from council, one of the, one of you guys will pick that one up. Others wishing to speak for or against this proposed request? Thank you, sir, for being here tonight.
Yes, sir, my name's Billy Griffin. I was born and raised here. Property's talking about in front of him. We own that property. We've done everything that's supposed to be done. I'm like Mr. Frazier. Where's he gonna put this water? There's no room to put a retention pond on two acres and 198 units, unmanned. My mom is 84 years old, lives across the street. I don't want to have to set a driveway and kill somebody from coming over there robbing her. Ain't got nobody to man the thing. More than anything, like I say, where's he gonna put the water? Water's already coming across the road. We got pictures of that, we got all of that. Like the other lady said, it's a floodplain, flood zone, floodway, and he's talking about $8 million to build a house there? Let me do the dirt work. I'll buy the trucks, I'll put them on in the morning. I'd be glad to. Eight million? I guess he gonna build a 20-story? Because you can only put one acre, one house per acre. There's no water and there's no sewer. Where's he gonna get that? So, public housing, rental, whatever he says, you can put a house there. Might cost you a little bit. I'm not mistaken, the robbers built right next door to it. Yeah, they had to build up four foot, but I don't think it cost eight million. They did show me, show me some receipts. And like I say, I'd be glad to be his contractor, I'll haul the dirt in. That's it, thank y'all.
All right, thank you for that. I'm just gonna say, third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request, go to the podium. Yes, sir? You have the opportunity to do that. But I will say this, for those in the audience, we're not going to get into a he said, she said, back and forth fight. This is a public hearing of the city council. It is a dignified manner in which we do our business, and shortly after this, we're gonna move right on to council comments and questions.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to address, and city council, I wanted to address a couple of the concerns that the neighbors had. I did reach out to our neighbors there, and I did bring up their concerns of the floodway, and they expressed their concerns as far as the water runoff. My suggestion to them, I told them at my cost, at our expenses, if it made them feel any better from any of the water that's running off our properties, I'd be more than glad to build a masonry wall between our two properties to prevent them from flooding over or overflowing from our property to their properties. That's the first thing. The second concern they had as far as security, we plan on being manned 24 hours a day, plus a very in-depth security system to monitor all of our properties. There is no noise barrier from storage rooms, there's no one playing music inside of a storage facility. It's basically sitting there, empty storage, or monitored storage facility to address any concerns they have when it comes to the security part of it, as far as where we're going to do with all the runoff of the water. That's what our engineers are for. The reason we have a staff of engineers, they're gonna kind of figure out what best suits the needs of, what meets the guidelines that's set by the city council for all the runoffs. So all their concerns are invalid, and I understand that Grandma and Grandpa want to not have a mini-storage next to them, but Grandma and Grandpa own the mini-storage next to them. And I'll say this again, their concern is Grandma and Grandpa do not want to have a mini-storage next to them. Grandma and Grandpa own the mini-storage next to them. We're talking 50 feet between our properties. So their concerns is, it doesn't make any sense to us of why they're objecting to our mini-storages there. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you for that. Moving forward in our agenda, kick it over to city council. Questions, comments, concerns you may have? I have, I have a question of staff, and I want it on the table, very, I mean, I understand what he's got here is a, is a mini-storage request, and we understand he was looking to zone this M1 and then do as many storage, because that's what we were contemplating and talking about, but, so Darren or John and your group, if we were to grant the M1, is there any guarantee that he's gonna build a mini-storage?
No, he'd still have to come forward for the CUP application. So basically, tonight, you'd just be deciding if you're zoning the property M1, and so the question is, does, does an industrial zone, and all the uses allowed in industrial zone go in this location?
And then the second thought here is, the future land use plan, which is in the packet, I think it's another slide or two away from the one you've got on the, it shows all of this to be residential in the future. I guess my question, John, is, as we're going through the comprehensive plan update, I mean, a storage facility across the road, and the storage facility behind is in our ETJ, it's not in our city, so we can't, we can't govern that anyway. Was there any looks at this corner as a, some kind of a retail node?
We haven't got that far, starting the new comprehensive plan and the draft, but based on the existing residential at the northwest corner, the school at the northeast, you might have a small commercial component, but it's not gonna be a major commercial area.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a major node, but I could, I could see some small retail node there, potentially. Just a couple of comments on that. Any other questions, comments, and council?
For the engineering team, is, what is the designation? Is this in the floodway or floodplain, as was mentioned in the public comment?
Councilman Kamkar, I'm gonna go ahead and let Raj, our city engineer, answer that question.
Yes, Councilman Kamkar, this is in floodway. The whole property is in floodway, but we need to realize that the floodway design since came before we built Bailey Road. So that was a ditch before, and FEMA used that ditch to designate, to delineate the floodway. So since then, we tried to appeal FEMA to change that floodway, to reduce that floodway, but since it was in 2020, they wanted us to remove that application so that they can issue the effective map quickly. So since then, we have done two things. One is, after that study, what we found is there are two detention ponds, one at Bailey and Wells Road, and the other one at the diversion ditch downstream, the bigger detention pond. Both of those ponds were, appear to be functioning under design. So for that reason, BDD4 worked on that to modify the wheel so we can be properly utilized, those ponds can be properly utilized. So it's been done, we're ready to go through law more process, but the law more process will take quite a while, because we haven't even selected the consultant yet.
I'm so glad you're on our team, that was so much detail, thank you so much. Really, I got the answer, so thank you.
You're such a drainage geek. So anyway, all right, any other questions, comments from council?
I guess I'll just give real quick color. To your point, Mayor, I don't think industrial makes any sense here whatsoever, so, I input, thank you.
I agree, I think P&amp;Z got it right.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll stop this, or end this public hearing and move to new business item number two. Mr. Carbone, would you place that on the table, please?
Thank you, Mayor, consideration, possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000M-223, so moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Before we move on, as noted, planning and zoning denied this request, oh four, so it would take a supermajority needed, and it's a supermajority of the entire council, so it would have to receive a unanimous vote of those present in order to be approved. Is that correct, Mr. Governor?
Yes, Mayor, it's gonna take a supermajority of the seven, even though somebody has abstained. So yes, it will require six votes.
Okay, so with that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
No.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Little? Member Owens?
No.
Member Orlando?
No.
Motion fails, six to zero.
All right, thank you for that. Moving forward in our agenda, consent agenda, items A through E, are there any items to be removed? Seeing none, Mayor Pro Tim, would you present consent agenda items A through E?
No, I've never done this, Mayor, I'll try.
I have confidence.
Sure. I move that we approve consent agenda items A through E.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero for consent agenda items A through E.
All right, thank you. Moving to new business continued, item number three. Mr. Kamkar, would you present new business item number three, please?
Consideration, possible action, resolution R 2022-54, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is the presentation to you of the annual financial report for the fiscal year 2021 that ended September 30th, 2021. Thanks and salute to our internal city finance staff that did the majority of the legwork and production of the documents, but the presentation tonight is from our independent auditors, BKD. I believe this is their second year with us, and they've gone through and done their audit work, started well even before the end of the fiscal year and leading up to tonight. So Amanda is here, I think she and Shakita are gonna do the report, they got a PowerPoint for you, and they'll move to the podium for that now, thank you.
All right, welcome, ladies. Josh, do you have their PowerPoint keyed up?
Thank you, Mayor and council. We appreciate the opportunity to work with Pearland again this year, and the opportunity to share our audit results with you this evening. Our presentation is going to start off covering just some highlights in your financial statements. I'm gonna go through that, and then I'll turn it over to Shakita, who will talk about our audit results. This is just an agenda of what we're gonna cover today. So your annual comprehensive financial report, which you have in your packet, has a number of different sections to it, so this is just an overview of your financial statements. It's a pretty lengthy report, and I do commend your staff for doing a tremendous job in preparing this report annually. So the introductory section... So the introductory, introductory section, um, at the beginning of the report has general information on the city, um, its services and environment, um, some economic information as well as some awards that the city has received. Uh, the financial section is the largest part. Um, and that's where your independent auditor's report is as well as your basic financial statement. Um, and then the statistical section follows that, um, at the end of the report. And this is a lot of information, um, about different components within the city. It's not all financial related, but there's a lot of good statistical information in that section for you as well. Starting off, I'll talk a little bit about the transmittal letter. Um, so this is in the introductory section and what we're highlighting here is on the last page of the transmittal letter. Um, so the city did receive some awards and acknowledgements related to financial reports that they issue each year. So congratulations to the city on receiving the, uh, Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting for 45 consecutive years. I mean, as you can see, this is a really large report and the city has done a tremendous job in preparing that and filing that annually. It is not, uh, a required filing, but the city has really, you know, went, went above and beyond. So congratulations to your team in putting that together. Um, next, the distinguished budget presentation award. So you've received this for 34 consecutive years. And then the popular annual financial reporting award. So that one's been submitted. This is the second year you prepared and submitted that. Um, it's pending review by GFOA. They're a little bit, um, later, a little bit further behind, or behind this year interviewing those. But the city does anticipate to receive that award again as well. And then also the, uh, GTOT, uh, treasurer's certificate of distinction for the city's investment policy was received as well. So this is just a snapshot of the city's, uh, net position or balance sheet at the end of the year, at the end of 2021 as compared to 2020. Uh, this is in your management's discussion and analysis section. It's on page 10 of the financial report. Um, and it really, it compares, um, the city's balance sheet between the two years, but it also breaks it out between government type and business type activities. So your business type activities are your activities that are operated a little bit more like a business, like your water sewer sanitation fund activities. And then everything else is reported as governmental type activities. You can see at the end of the year, um, 2021, you had total net position of 864 million, um, up from 837 million in the prior year. Um, if you look on that third line from the bottom over to the right, you'll see that at the end of 2021, the biggest portion of your, uh, net position was net investment and capital assets. So that, that is your, your capital assets that the city has, uh, purchased net of any related debt. So bond, uh, funds that were issued for the, the capital assets. Um, then you had 75 million in restricted net position, leaving you with about 134 million of unrestricted net position. So positive net position in all three categories. Next, this is a comparative statement of activities. Uh, it's really tiny, but, uh, this is in your financial statements on page 11. So this compares, uh, the, the income statements, if you will, for 21 and 20 for both government type and business type activities. And so you had a positive change in net position, um, in both your governmental and business type activities for the year. Uh, your total increase in net position was 26.8 million. Note one to your financial statements is on page 39. It's a pretty lengthy note, page 39 through 50. Uh, this note is, is important to read because it talks about all of the city's financial accounting policies. It really describes to you how the financial statements are laid out, what, what's reported in each of the funds and on the different line items. So we would recommend that you read that note. Um, it also talks about, so the city did adopt new, uh, new accounting guidance or a new accounting standard during the year, and that was GASB 84 and 97. Um, and the result of that is that there is a new fund reported in your financial statements. It's a fiduciary custodial fund, um, where state court costs that the city collects, um, that's not the city's revenue that has to be paid back to the state is reported in that new fund. So you'll see that in your financial statement. Um, next note three receivables. We just wanted to highlight this note. This note shows your receivable balances, uh, for the enterprise funds broken out between your billed and unbilled balances. So the city has, uh, bills for services and some services have been billed or, you know, invoices have been sent out as of the end of the year. But there are some services that are performed before year end where the invoice basically isn't sent out or the bill isn't sent out until after year end. So that's your unbilled receivable. So you can see at the end of 2021, your unbilled receivable, uh, for the enterprise funds was 10.4 million. And that's in comparison to last year, it was about, it was 12.1 million. Um, next, I just wanted to, since we, we were talking about the net position, um, and your net investment in capital assets. So if you look at note four, which is on page 57 and also 58 of your financial statements, you'll see more detail on the capital assets of both your governmental type activities and your business type activities, just to give you a little bit more information about the activity and the additions to capital assets that have occurred during the year. Also wanted to point out note nine. Um, so the city has a pension plan, uh, through the Texas municipal retirement system. And this note disclosure here, um, it's a pretty lengthy footnote, note nine. This is just, um, a part of that note that shows the change in your net pension liability for the year. Um, so you'll see that your net pension liability in 2021 decreased by about 600,000. Uh, but I would encourage you to, to read this note. Um, the, the net pension liability is really determined by the actuary using a number of different assumptions. And so it's important for you to read through and, and understand, um, what goes into developing that estimate. And then similarly, note 10 on page 73 and 76, the city has another post-employment benefit, uh, plan. And so there is an OPEB liability that's recorded related to, uh, those plans at the end of the year. This, uh, slide here just shows the change, changes in the total OPEB liability. And then again, if you look at that, uh, note 10 and specifically you'll see the different actuarial assumptions that were used in determining those liabilities. Um, and then the last part of the financials I'm going to go over is on page 85. Um, so this is the general fund budget to actual schedule. So you'll see that the general fund, um, you had budgeted a net decrease in fund balance of, let's see, uh, 3.7 million, uh, revenues less expenses. And you actually had a positive increase of 691,000. So you had a favorable, favorable budget variance there of 4.4 million. If you go down to the, the net change in fund balance line, um, after you look at your other financing activities, that where you had, uh, bottom line budgeted a decrease of 2.3 million, you actually had an increase of 3.4 million. So you did better than budget by about 5.8 million. And that is, uh, the end of the financial statement highlights. I'm going to let Shakita talk about our audit results.
Thanks, Amanda. Um, so as a part of our audit, we do, um, have several deliverables here or a couple of deliverables. Uh, we issue a report on the city of Pearlands and your comprehensive financial report as well as the single audit under uniform guided. The results of the audit, we are issuing unmodified, um, or clean opinions on both the financial statements and on the single audit. There were no scope limitations and there were no unresolved, um, audit issues. Throughout the audit, there was open and effective communication with management. We were required to test two major programs and those major programs included the coronavirus relief fund as well as the drinking water state revolving fund cluster. As part of our, um, single audit, we are required to issue a report on internal control over financial reporting. Um, so you will notice, um, in the single audit report, um, on page 11, we are reporting two findings. Um, one is related to grant revenues and this was related to revenue being overstated, um, by about 5.9 million. An audit adjustment was proposed and recorded by the city to report the unspent grant funding as unearned revenue. The second finding is related to capital assets. Um, during the audit, several issues were noted, um, with the reconciliations, the review and the recording processes of capital assets. And this did result in several audit adjustments. The next slide here, uh, we do, um, present the prior year findings so that you are aware of what the status of those findings are. And so there were four prior year findings, um, accrued revenues and liabilities. That finding was resolved. Preparation of the schedule of expenditures of federal and state awards. That finding was resolved and preparation of financial statements related to the internal service fund activities was resolved. You will notice finding number three, capital assets is noted as partially resolved. And that's primarily due to the finding that I just discussed related to the current year. And that concludes the audit results and I will open it up for any questions you may have for myself or Amanda.
All right. Uh, Clyde, is that, uh?
Just real quick, mayor, I should have mentioned, uh, we also, uh, ran this report through the audit committee of the city council. Want to salute, uh, recognize them, uh, as yourself, uh, mayor, uh, member, um, who else was on that? Little and Carbone. So, uh, appreciate their extra work and they asked a lot of questions and, and, uh, they had a, a review of this in ahead of time. Uh, and then also I just, you know, it strikes me that again, want to thank the, the staff for the work. And, uh, you know, as, as been recognized and the clean audit opinion, once again, uh, the city is a complex organization, you know, $800 million, you know, over three quarters of a billion dollar uh, value to the enterprise with all our fixed assets and so forth. And, uh, so it takes a lot and appreciate everybody's been working on this. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Any questions, comments from council? Member Campar?
This, uh, presentation, uh, referenced the, the CAFR for, for this year. Do we have that yet?
Yeah. It's in the packet on Thursday.
All right. And that's, that's the one that we're basing this off of?
Yes, sir.
And then, uh, lastly, the, uh, this is only cash accounting or is there, is there an accrual, uh, methodology here?
Mr. Campar, too, uh, once council accepts this, we'll be posting the, uh, the documents separately. We've got a page on the website where, uh, past years are all available for resource. That'll all be there too.
I just, I'd like to thank staff and auditors for putting up with the audit committee and answering all the questions. So we don't have to tonight. Um, and once again, good work. And I know Joel got looped into it as well. So thank you, Joel, for your, uh, passion or fill in the blank with one of your big words. Yes, sir. Uh, and likewise, I think, uh, staff has done a, a great job. Uh, BKD, thank you for all the work, uh, again this year. Uh, it's always interesting to see how it, uh, it's, it starts and moves and morphs. And we finally get to a night like tonight and we, uh, we have a good presentation. And, uh, and I will say for the public, uh, uh, you know, our, all of our financial information is out there, uh, on the internet to see. Uh, it's, it's very wide open. Uh, it's very transparent. Uh, I've had, uh, companies that have, have called me to ask about certain things and they, they've seen financials, they've seen things out on the internet that, uh, that, that, that before they even asked the question, you know? And so, uh, that do business with many, many cities and, you know, they act, they, they are very impressed with the financial, uh, transparency that we show, uh, out on, uh, on the website. So this is all part of that transparency and, and process. And as, uh, member Carbone said, our grants and our single audit and those types of things are, are now, uh, being caught up in the audit every single year. So, um, getting better and better in that area and, uh, making sure that, that we're accountable not only for the, for the dollars that are here with our taxpayers, but your federal tax dollars that come back here, uh, in the form of CDBG grants and CARES funding and ARPA funding and every other alphabet that's out there and funding as it, as it's coming through. We need to be held accountable to that and make sure that, uh, that those dollars are spent wisely, uh, and, and transparently so people can see how we do it. So, uh, kudos to everybody on that. Any other questions, comments? All right. Seeing none. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right. Thank you. Thank you again, ladies, for your presentation and being here tonight. Moving to new business item number four, uh, council member Little, would you present that, please?
Consideration of possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1358 dash 22. So moved. Second.
We have a motion of second. Staff report.
Thanks for this, uh, first reading of an ordinance that, uh, would, uh, provide a mechanism, uh, updated for the winter quarter average in our water sewer system. Uh, this is in the, uh, customers' benefits so that, uh, when we're calculating sewage fees, uh, that's not, it's calculating at the, uh, usage over the winter months. And so I need to get this in place so we can make that for the, uh, season upcoming. Nothing to add.
All right. This is kind of an annual event. Any other questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right. Moving forward, new business item number five. Mr. Perez, would you present that, please?
Thank you, mayor. Consider as possible action, second reading of ordinance number 1605. So, uh, dash four, so moved.
Motion of second. Staff report.
Thank you, mayor. This is the, uh, second reading of a budget amendment that you saw last time and it stems from, uh, earlier discussions. This provides a budget for a technology package, uh, that weighed our public, uh, safety services. Nothing to add.
All right. Questions, comments, concerns from council?
Yes, uh, first of all, thank you to the staff for putting the GO, uh, items in the memorandum. Thank you. Um, and then lastly, on the, for the police staff, for the points that you picked out in the green on that map, some of those are major thoroughfares that have, um, folks going both directions. How are you, what's the methodology of how you're going to do placement there?
Maybe referring to the next item for the actual flock cameras. This is the budget amendment for that.
I guess the, the flock cameras are in this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm dumping the gun. Sorry.
That's right. The map, I think, was the next one that might have slowed down a little bit.
Hold the phone.
Just hold that or?
That's fine.
Okay.
Suspend there, chief.
Just trying to find the map in this one.
I got it. Any other questions, comments? All right. Seeing none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Motion carries five to one.
All right. Moving to new business item number six, uh, council member Owens, would you present that, please?
Consideration of possible action, resolution of R 2022 dash 57. So moved. Second.
We have a motion of second. Staff report.
So we put this on the regular agenda because we needed the second reading. Uh, but this is actually moving forward on the implementation, I'm sorry, of the award of a contract for these, uh, automated license plate readers. It's a technology that's been proven effective in the metro area. And, uh, we've gained from that already from other, uh, cities, but this will be starting that program. Uh, in fact, the police department had already moved forward with some drug asset, uh, forfeiture monies, uh, for a portion. And then with, uh, the budget amendment, uh, we're going to be adding, uh, to more cameras with our trial and then going from there. So, uh, this would be the, uh, award of that going forward. And I don't know if you want to ask your question now or?
Member Cam Carr?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I'll repeat that for the record. So on the, some of the major rideways like Pearland Parkway, um, there's one green dot, but you've got traffic going both ways. Um, and so just how do we think on placement on that?
The intent is to try to capture as, as much as we can with as few cameras as we can. Uh, we started off with the, um, the city manager said, we started off with the nine cameras that we were getting from the seizure fund. Um, when we were able to expand it with the, uh, grant this, uh, council has provided, that's where we broached out a little bit further to try. broached out a little bit further to try to identify the key avenues primarily into Pearland, where we can capture the traffic that's coming in, and then subsequently out in some locations. So we worked our crime analyst to find those, find and identify those key locations.
That works for me. And then there's a policy being built around the use on this, just the public's knowledge that we're not using this for traffic enforcement and things like that, right?
Yes, and that eventually, that policy will be on our website, as are others are.
Right, I think that's reassuring, I know that there's comments on that, we're not trying to generate revenue for traffic stops, we're trying to keep bad actors
Exactly.
out of the city, or quickly caught thereafter.
Chief Savage, real quick, just, I guess, in a brief fashion, since we have members of the public here, and we're online, just kind of describe the Automated License Plate Reader Service, exactly what does that entail, what does it do, how does it keep bad actors, as being mentioned, how do we identify that, and explain a little bit about the flock camera system?
Okay, so the flock that we, the flock camera system that we selected, it's strictly vehicle-based, so these units are solar-powered, and they have their own cell signal, so each individual unit is either, is able to both gather and send the data to the cloud, where then we can access it. As I said, it's focused on the vehicle, so it's not capturing an individual's biometric data, no facial recognition, nothing like that, we're strictly going for the vehicle itself and the license plate. So in addition to the license plate, it can capture some of the descriptors of the vehicle, as well as any kind of special identifying characteristics, such as a roof rack, or oversized wheels, anything like that.
Okay, so it reads someone's camera, or license plate, and that may flag something in the system?
Exactly.
Okay, are we alerted, and how, I mean, we're not sitting there looking at every piece of data that's coming through, so how are we alerted?
So what we're primarily using this for is a lead generator for our investigators. If they get a suspect vehicle, or a description of a vehicle, we're able to query that data, and not only will we get the data from Pearland, but we'll get it from our neighboring agencies who may have recorded the vehicle somewhere else, as we've kind of talked about in a previous council meeting.
I noticed we had a resident in our community, we got a sit rep on this a week or so ago, member in our communities, got memory loss issues, and it was through the flock cameras in Friendswood, I believe, that they were able to see that he was in Friendswood.
Yes, and that was actually an interesting case with the silver alert, because originally he was recorded in the Sugar Land area, and then, you know, it went on for a few hours, and he was in the Friendswood area, but because of the network system, we were able to see, oh, he was over here, and then when we found he was in Friendswood, we were able to focus our attention and the effort, the combined law enforcement efforts in that community. So speaking to the first question, we're not actively monitoring these things 24/7. If a stolen vehicle, or an amber alert, or a silver alert, any of the state mandated alerts pop up, our dispatch would be notified, and we would send an officer. Otherwise, we're primarily using this as a lead generator for our investigators.
So like in the silver alert, we obviously know his vehicle, his family knows his vehicle, we know a license plate, so we're able to upload that license plate, and the flock camera was able to spot it?
Yes, so it was into the DPS, the statewide system, however, it was picked up by a flock camera.
Okay, just a little bit more how-to, since we have some members of the public here, so I think it's a good investment, so. Any other questions, comments from?
Yeah, I have just a couple, so you mentioned just now, like, three situations where we would be looking for something, or where we would get pinged, or whether it's a stolen vehicle, an amber alert, a silver alert. I guess my understanding was also that there was a threshold for really severe crimes, we would also be able to set an alert, so if we had a vehicle that we knew was associated with a murder, or a really nasty assault, or something? Would we be able to query for that, or have an alert set up, so that we would be notified in those instances? Yes, we can, so we can set those up as either, depending on the severity of the crime, we would set those up as either a local alert, or a broader statewide alert for the more serious offenses, and that's something that we're, that we're kind of fine-tuning with the policy and procedures under development now. Gotcha, yeah, and I guess, having had the opportunity through the Assistance Police Academy and other instances to do several ride-alongs with E P D, I know that a surprisingly high number of people have warrants for just random stuff that you see out there on the street, so it would be my understanding that the threshold for this would be set pretty high, that if you pulled over everybody who had an unpaid parking ticket, we wouldn't have enough officers by some huge factor, right? Yes, that's not the intent of this system. Awesome, and then the other, the other question that I had was, there's been some discussion lately, both in Pearland and just kind of more broadly, about this kind of spate of fake license plates, like the fake paper plates that don't actually correspond with the vehicle, so I guess with what you were describing, with being able to recognize the characteristics of vehicles, would we be able to, at least in some instances, identify a vehicle that was using one of those fraudulent paper plates? So if we found, if we found that a vehicle had fraudulent plates, or we think they might be switching them, we might focus a little bit more on the vehicle description, as opposed to the license plate itself, because criminals will swap those out. It's probably like a tattoo, you probably need something kind of more distinctive than just like a blue Honda Accord or something, right? Yes. Okay, those are just the questions I have, I think it's going to be a good program for the city, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Campar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one.
All right, thank you for that. Moving forward, we have matters removed from the agenda, there was none, other business, there was none, air council issues for City Council discussion, there are none, and so we are, at this time, we'll be moving into executive session under Texas Government Code, section 551.074 Personnel Matters, and regarding the annual review of City Manager, in section 551.074 Personnel Matters, regarding the City Council ratification of our City Manager's appointment of the City's Secretary, so we will adjourn into executive session at 7:40.
Reconvening after executive session at 9 o'clock. With that, we'll move to new business items seven and eight. First, consideration of possible action regarding the annual review of the city manager. Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adjust the city manager's salary as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right. New business item number eight, consideration of possible action regarding city council ratification of city manager's appointment of the city secretary.
Mayor, I move that we move to higher as recommended in the end exec session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Congratulations.
carries seven to zero.
Congratulations, Leslie, and welcome aboard. All right. And with that, we'll move to adjournment at 9:01.